All right. Good morning, everyone. It's eight thirty-one on Tuesday, Thursday, January twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectment. Our budget, our second budget meeting. We have decided to have another, have the vote on the budget on Monday because we have a bunch of work to get done today, tomorrow, over the weekend, and be able to vote on Monday. So we will have eight, is it eight or eight-thirty? Who's Tucker? Eight-thirty on Monday. We'll, we'll have a special final budget meeting to vote on the budget. And with that, this is a hybrid meeting. We have, we have any, we have some people will be coming on by Zoom. But public comments from the public are welcomed. I don't see anybody from the public here in the room. But if anybody wishes to comment on agenda topics, we will take comments by email only to B O S distribution at McCannis C T dot gov. And we will read the comments before the end of the meeting, if not in the course of the meeting. So we have a brief agenda before we get to the budget review continuation. And we have a couple of presentations, and we have first item on the agenda, those sidewalks. Tiger, good morning. By the way, we have a quorum.
Morning.
Good morning, Tiger.
So this is a contract with Capesas De Angelis. This is for the stretch of sidewalk that was just recently approved under the ARPA funding on Old Stanford Road from Bristow around the corner to Gower Road. We had a meeting yesterday with the D O T about the traffic report that was that we had performed by Michael Galante from Hard C in Hanover. And we mentioned this portion of sidewalk, mentioned that we'd be bringing it to, to this board today. Tuesday night, the eight twenty-four was approved by P and Z for this stretch. And we'd like to bring this contract with Capesas De Angelis for thirty-five thousand dollars for the survey and engineering. They're already doing Park Street, and then they're doing the piece from Park Street to Bristow. So it stands to reason that they'll continue from Bristow around the corner to Gower. So we're hoping to award this contract to them for thirty-five thousand dollars.
Questions for Tiger? This might be an appropriate time for me to mention that the Richmond Hill sidewalks have been on the agenda for three or four years.
Yeah, nineteen.
Maybe longer than, and we, we had applied for a state grant, which is transportation related. Unfortunately, it's taken, we're not done yet. They were almost final with our approval from the state. But these lots of grants take much longer than they need to because they have to go through both D O T and West Cog. And we've complained to our, both the West Cog and our state representatives that this process can't take so long. So the neighbors on Richmond Hill are upset. Those sidewalks are not yet being done. But I think this is, you know, we, we have a lot of demand for sidewalks and a lot, most of it's done by town funds and not by state funds. But I just want to mention that we had a comment this morning from someone when they saw the article about the Parade Hill sidewalks and why are they being done before the, and we actually have had two children hit by automobiles on Richmond Hill. So we very much want to get that done. And the approval process is near complete.
Near complete, but onerous nonetheless.
And we also have problems with Metro North in terms of crossing that railroad track. Anyway, so I just want to mention that. So any other questions about this stuff?
So I was walking on Sunday with Whitney and Bailey, our retriever, doing a loop down south and back up Main Street. And I was noticing the deterioration of the sidewalks on Farm.
Farm is slated with our budget monies for this year. We're slated to do that, that stretch.
Yeah, they're in tough shape. Yeah. Which I was surprised. I just think all of a sudden you go from, you know.
We've got great walks on South Avenue and Main Street. We need to make the connection. But you are correct.
Good.
Just one question on this, this particular one. What's the timing on this one on the old Stanford Road base two?
Right now, he's working through Gower and then the first stretch on Old Stanford Road for us. We have a stretch on Gower Road that he's completing. And then he'll go right onto this. So the survey work will be dovetailed into the survey work he's completing now. And then the design work will follow, but probably three, four months. And then we'll have a long period of time with the D O T. We need to give them a thirty set plan, a thirty percent plan set, and then gather comments, and then a ninety percent plan set, gather comments and go forward. So I don't foresee it being constructed in this season. I can see it constructing in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
April twenty-three is our goal. Our goal is to try to get to Bristow this year and then around the corner the following.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further questions. I move, we approve their question. Public Works entered to a contract with Capesas De Angelis engineers for the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to survey and design the extension of sidewalks along Old Stanford Road from the entrance to Bristow for sanctuary to Wildwood Preserve to Gower Road.
Second here.
Next seconds, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger.
So the next is approval of purchase from Carl Chevrolet for a new paramedic vehicle, a fly car for New Canaan EMS. This is one of two fly cars that they have. This will replace their two thousand and eight fly car, which is their backup with heavy miles on it. So it's a fourteen-year-old unit. We'd like to purchase the new fly car from Carl Chevrolet for fifty-seven thousand two fourteen ninety-five. And the funds for the purchaser currently in, in the budget.
We have a fourteen-year-old fly car.
We have a, that's the backup. Yeah. The current fly car is, is a twenty-fourteen unit. So it's a
It's not fourteen years old, it's twenty-fourteen.
No, the current flight, we have two. So we have the one that the paramedics use. And then if that paramedic goes out and he's on a call, then we have a backup one for another one to go out. That backup is fourteen years old. Yes. It was the, the funding for it back, not this administration or previous administration, they were asked to, to hold on one, one time for that. That's why this, this is a little bit older than normal. I'm sorry, it's a twenty-six, the current one is a twenty-sixteen Tahoe. So this will replace that and sixteen will go into, go into backup.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Carl Chevrolet for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-two Chevrolet Tahoe as a fly car for the emergency medical services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kathleen, seconds for the discussion. All favor. Bye. All right.
And then the last is reimbursement from Aquarian for various projects that we've been partnering with them on. So we received four checks from Aquarian. We have to actually ask for this to be added to our budget. So it's a special appropriation. So this will go from Board of Selectment to the Board of Finance to the Town Council. So the, the four checks total one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine twenty-three fifty-nine. It's partial, it's a fifty percent payment for the work on Main Street from Farm Road to Lakeview. A fifty percent payment for the work on, they just recently did on Elm Street and Church Street. And then the work that they did on Mortimer and Lockwood as well, fifty percent of that paving cost. And then the replacement for the sidewalks, the sidewalk repair for fourteen thousand three hundred that you just approved. We, we received that check as well, and that, that will reimburse our, our, our budgets for that.
So Tiger, I, I mean, I get what this is for. I just don't understand as reimbursement in lieu of paying road opening permit fees.
Right. So instead of paying the road opening permit fee, because we have a road opening permit fee at seven dollars and fifty cents a square foot, right? So instead of paying that, we say, listen, just pay us for the, for the road paving. And then, because that's what we want in the end. I don't necessarily need the permit fee. I necessarily need the road repaved. So the, the fifty percent fee actually works out in the town paper usually. It's a little bit above what the, what the permit fee is. And then Aquarian gets to wash their hands and say, we helped you repave the road. And we go from there. So it's a longstanding, this is, was our first partnership. This goes back to probably two thousand, two thousand and three with Aquarian. And now we're trying to use this to mirror with ever-source gas and other utilities as we go forward.
How appropriate that we have this noise out here with installing gas today.
Sorry, I, you know, there's not much I could do. The timing is terrible. I talked to him yesterday. I apologize.
It's progress. We can hear progress.
Right. So they, they have one day left, believe it or not.
One day left before the storm.
Right.
All right. Any questions, Bob? Any further questions? Okay. I move, we approve the request from Public Works to deposit one hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents from Aquarian as reimbursement in lieu of paying road opening permit fees for each trend project and as part of the partnership with the town on infrastructure improvements. The monies will be deposited to cover expenses incurred for repaving of roads and installation of sidewalks. This is primarily Main Street and Elm Street.
Church Street as well, and then Mortimer Lockwood.
Right. Okay. Second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Tiger. Okay. Contracts, there's a few contracts on the tablet, under ten thousand dollars. Any questions?
Just the one on the, the disassembling the boiler here in Town Hall to diagnose the problem. Did we determine what the problem was?
That's an oil tank, not, not the
tank outside into the oil tank. That's why we're changing over to gas. And when we change over to gas, our problems should go away.
Okay.
Should, will.
I'm going to say should. It should be a will, but I'm going to say it should go away.
You said a boiler, though, that you can convert. It's a dual fuel, right? So don't you want to fix the oil one just in case someday you have to switch?
We're, we're contemplating that. Yeah. The, the problem is that the tank itself might have to be replaced. And at that point in time, that's a, that's a heavy capital item to actually just take the whole tank out, put in the one.
If it's right under the parking lot.
How big is the tank?
Big. Yeah. Couple.
Two thousand?
Yeah, it's a big tank. It's, yeah. If you see that entire concrete pad that's out there, that's where it is. So it's
So that's fairly, right? I mean, that came with the
Came with the, it came with the structure, yeah. But I think that there was a little damage at the time that it was installed. I'm not quite certain of the story. So it's, we've had a, you have a
It's not metal. It must be
No, fiberglass. Yeah, we have a, we have an alarm system on it. But then we're seeing that we're getting a little bit of water infiltration. We're trying to track it down. Normally, we've got to bring the tech out to have that done. That's, that's the cause for that, is to bring the tech out, see what, see what the problem is, look at the pumps, see what we've got a problem with, and then go forward. But we're hoping that once we go to gas, we won't need to go back at that point.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, right?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
No other question? What's that? No other question? Yep. Any other questions about the contracts? We're not voting on this, right? Okay. That brings us to our first of two presentations today. First one is Waviney uses study report and case study brands from Greenwich. Do you call yourselves from Greenwich, I guess? The masterminds behind, behind the Greenwich Town Party.
So I'm joined here with Sarah Allard and Ellen Reed of Case Study Brands. They have been working with the town of New Canaan for, they were part of the Greenwich, well, they work in the Greenwich Town Party, but then they've helped with the Athletic Foundation for Field Fest here. That's how we found them. And this is a project that I think has been talked about at the Parks and Rec level for some time, and that is how to really promote Waviney as a premier wedding event kind of a space, all the while making sure that it is available to the community for all of our local events that we, you know, during the week and things like that. So we've asked Sarah and Ellen to do some research for us on sort of the art of the possible. And I'm going to let you, have you got your presentation? You all have copies of the presentation, literally hot off the press. Good, okay. In the interest of time, we're not going to go through every page, but I think Sarah is just going to take you through some of the highlights, and then we can have a discussion on what happens next.
Sure. Thank you guys so much for the opportunity. We loved this project. Our approach to the project was to try to really integrate the values of New Canaan with the value of Waviney House. I think we believe as an agency that those things are integrated. We it will go through quickly. But the objective of our project was really to provide guidance and clarity for how we approach going forward. We worked to uncover and articulate a brand DNA and strategic guidelines to drive engagement, to build community, ultimately our return on the investment that we're talking about for the town of New Canaan. We're hoping what we share with you guys today will help serve as the future positioning and guidelines for where we go in the future. And there is a list you guys can see. We interviewed ten people who try and get a three sixty approach to any of our businesses that we're looking at so that we really hear from all constituents. Everybody has this. You can go through a detail later. But we studied the background of Waviney. We thought that really laid a foundation, the history, the values that were integral when New Canaan bought it. And the constituents, who uses it now? So it's the New Canaan Recreation Department, nonprofits, local businesses, residents and families, brides, event planners and caterers. So here's a vast list of uses. It really caters to almost everybody in town at any opportunity. And so I think just starting with the foundation, this is a super important building for everybody that could use it for anything they would want to. However, what we discovered in talking to everybody are there are some significant challenges we're experiencing right now that if they're not addressed, really limit our ability to be a premier wedding destination, but also to maintain this really valuable asset that the town has. Some of those really high up are some ADA compliance. The second floor still needs some renovations. Some HVAC issues. There is no dedicated staff right now. So you're multitasking between town dedicated staffs. When somebody calls, they're talking to somebody that may be managing Parks and Rec. And I think other premier organizations, and we'll show you some competitive landscapes, have a dedicated person to that. And I think for brides and party planners, that's sort of what they're looking for. There's a lot of shared physical space. No single one space that can accommodate a large crowd. There's no dedicated website or communication channel, branding or marketing. We need some decorating upgrades, use of more available rooms, and then on and on and on. And we'll go through some of those and how we can look at that. We looked on a vast basis, but mostly local on other venues, the competitive landscape of where somebody might go if they were not going to Waviney something comparable. We looked at public historic venues as well as country clubs and hotels. And on this page is a chart, and I think lots of details and lots of research went into this. But it really helps highlight some pricing structures and some different variables that other organizations and buildings are bringing in.
And I just want to jump in on this page, though. Keep in mind, this, we also had Iona College. We had a team of students from Iona working with on this part of it. This is a really hard way to compare apples to apples. There's no one. You know, it depends. When you go to a venue to, to look at booking a venue, it's not just how much does it cost if I have a hundred people. Obviously, it depends on the, the menu and, and all of that. So I just want you to understand that when you're looking at this page.
And I think some of the details are, are there professional staff? Are, is there a caterer on staff? Are you getting, you know, the hotel services that come with it? So I think in each area, what we really focused on here is how to make Waviney House the best it could possibly be. But it helped to understand what other people were doing, and we've got snippets of that later. The current rental fees for Waviney are considered low, except in order to, to increase those, there's going to need to be increased value and perceived value. And so we really looked at how can we do that for the town. This is a quick insight into how we think. We really believe that when we create a brand DNA for any project that we do, it really helps for strong engagement, clear communication. So the lens through which we looked at this project was taking the values of New Canaan and how we're going to treat one of our most important brands. Waviney is not a brand, it's a house. But in order for the perception of a value for a bride or for the town to feel like it's something they can feel proud of, we looked at how do we align those two value systems. So we love, we shape our buildings thereafter. Our buildings shape us. There's an integral connection between this building and the town. And through our interviews and getting to know the people we spoke with and the town better, we focused on five values that New Canaan really has and brings to Waviney House. The first thing, community. New Canaan values the opportunity to gather, to engage and celebrate the people and groups that make New Canaan special. They value culture. We value, we celebrate culture. The history of the house is rooted in art, music, history and education. New Canaan values elegance. We are inherently beautiful and architectural masterpiece built with artisan craftsmanship, attention to detail and exceptional design. The value of heritage. We are committed to the preservation and promotion of this historic landmark and vitality. We had our very best when the house is filled with life and we're marking milestones and new beginnings. We tried to tie these values into how we look at the future of Waviney House. And when we look at strategy, we look at how are we actually going to take our values and take action steps to make what we want to happen, happen. And so we divided into three action steps. One, we want to revitalize the house. Two, we want to engage as a brand. And three, we want to maximize utilization. In order to revitalize the house, we believe that we, Waviney House, and we heard it from every single person we talked to, was the crown jewel of New Canaan. We've heard from many sources over a long period of time that additional structural and design updates are needed. As stewards of this house, it's our responsibility to protect our investment and undertake this critical work as soon as possible. Continuing to invest in necessary upgrades will allow us to maintain the building's relevance and usability, making the venue more competitive with other options and more appealing to the intended audience. Next is our strategy. We're going to engage as a brand. We have the opportunity to elevate Waviney House as its own brand. We seek to create an identity that positions the venue as a luxury brand reflective of both its heritage and crowd jewel positioning within the community. Through branding, communication and dedicated staff, we can lead with a brand persona, values and standards to achieve the luxury service that this house deserves. And the next one is to maximize the with investment in Waviney's house physical structure, along with the development of new brand identities, we believe that we will set the stage for utilizing the venue at its fullest potential and generating revenue accordingly. Our action items include expanding capacity of events by applying a temporary tent and restroom facilities. Our dedicated staff and new branding will increase the venue's perceived value to generate increased usage fees. And leveraging those our physical space and calendar will enable additional users to access the venue for new and more types of events. And then we help try to define our mission. So what are we all here today trying to do? And how are we going to do it? We're going to invest time, money and resources to preserve and celebrate this landmark and this community. Our purpose is to preserve and celebrate the history and the future of Waviney House. And our vision. So what do we do when we look towards the future is to create a self-sustainable institution that represents the very best values of New Canaan. Culture, community, heritage, as it moves into its next chapter. And so on this slide, we've sort of put all of our thoughts together and welcome any questions and any thoughts that you guys have. It's meant to be a really collaborative process. So then we sort of look at the next chapter, and we say, there's work to be done. This is a very long list of, and it's not even comprehensive, of all the things we heard from our interviews of a wish list of if we could do anything, these are things that would really help in three sectors, help for events, for community and for the facility itself. One of the opportunities we talked about was trying to create a public-private partnership. We gave some examples, the New Canaan Athletic Foundation, one of them, the Greenwich Point Conservancy, where potentially we put together a group of private citizens willing to really engage with the public part of New Canaan and Waviney to, to create a future and a, really a think tank for how we can get this done. And then here we've put together just a roadmap for success, looking at our strategy and what that sort of tactically looks like. The first one, being a dedicated staff. A house director would be responsible for representing Waviney House. They would be all knowing about the house's history and details. They would reflect Waviney's values. They could share testimonials, contacts, photos, floor plans, and maybe the first touch point for a bride or a party planner, anybody wanting to engage with a big event. They would help meet and tour the house. They would manage the calendar, all dates and details. They would manage vendor resources and recommendations and provide concierge services. It's just in our research, some visual examples. There's Lonsbury House, Windbeam Farms, Foxville Inn, Welsworth, and these are just snippets from their website. But all of these places have dedicated staff. So when we look at a competitive landscape, we're looking at that. The next idea strategically is to create a dedicated website for Waviney. Currently, the Waviney information lives on the town of New Canaan's website. So it doesn't feel glamorous. It doesn't feel what some bride is looking for.
In the rec department.
Yeah, in the rec department.
You know, so I think when we look at very low hanging fruit for a way to say, this is easy to do. And so here's sort of our, our site map of things that we could have, but it would have a photo gallery and a calendar, and we could do recommended vendors. And I think that's a great way to engage with our community, the local caterers, the local photographers. Anything local that we could really help promote community, testimonials, certainly community events, and then the dedicated contact. This is the current website. So in order to get to, you sort of have to dig through the town website and go to Parks and Rec, and it's a little bit lacking in the glamour. And then here quickly, I'll run through some of our competitive landscapes website. There's Roger Sherman. This is the Glass House, which is recently started doing weddings. Warren Mansion. You can see the general theme. All of them are very beautiful and artistic, and they become a, a really a beautiful brochure for these venues via the website. Go to the links. Wiki Castle. Spectacular and beautiful. And so we wanted to show you guys, because we couldn't have over. This is our favorite project, and it would be amazing. But if we had the opportunity that to really create branding and website for Waviney House, we just see it as spectacular. So we threw in some ideas of, right now, there's no logo for the house. So when a bride comes, she has to create everything. But if we created a beautiful monogram that had heritage that brides could use for whether it be the cornhole board or their napkins or champagne bottles. China, anything that would really customize the venue and make it feel as special as the venue itself is, that's something that we would just think would be amazing for Waviney House. These are just examples in photography. We found this beautiful watercolor right here that a bride had done. But all of those things just create a real sense of the history and the value and the luxury that the house offers. These are just ideas for what a website could look like, if we had a dedicated website for Waviney and would have all that information on it. You know, venue information, event information, community information, really a lot about the history and where it is in the present day. And then we had a vision of the drive going through Waviney Park, having all these beautiful museum flags. And when there was an event, you'd be able to market it, but really to engage Waviney Park with Waviney House and the community.
Love information.
So I'm like, trying to get it all in in our ten minutes.
Now, the reason we have this
Few months doing this, and I think it was, it was an amazing project. Both of us love history and we love New Canaan, and this building is amazing. So for us, it was a tremendous opportunity. So we appreciate it.
We don't usually give sneak peeks. Branding ideas, but that's how much we like it here.
Thank you. And also, Iona chose us.
Yes, they did.
They were looking for a project, and it was fun working with the kids. And they helped us research things. Tiger and Bill Ossman, you know, the relevance of all this is, we're asking for two and a half million dollars plus for the next projects, for the second floor, accessibility to the second floor with an elevator. If we don't, if we don't provide that, at some point, we're not going to be able to use the second floor. And also, we need bathrooms that are appropriate to an institutional use.
Right. What do we, what do we, what do you guys envision using the second floor for, for wedding events?
Good.
Well, a lot of what it gets used for is bridal suites.
Yeah.
So the wedding party, the groom and the bride and the families get ready. They spend the day there. The photographer does a lot of work up there. It's beautiful. And I think the, that's just the wedding venue part, but there could be lots of community events. The rooms upstairs are beautiful.
They are beautiful.
They're beautiful.
It's really amazing. So there's tons of opportunity. And I think through the think tank, the endless possibilities just need to be put on paper. But whether it be a backgammon club, who knows? There's endless stuff you could do upstairs. It's just as, you need to be able to use it legally.
And with respect to, I guess, having a full-time director of Waviney House, kind of the face of I'm a part-time, part-time?
It would be a person that was fully educated. So when they called, they would have a business card, and they would answer the phone. That would be Waviney House as opposed to Parks and Rec.
Right. Waviney House weddings, how can I help you?
No, I, I get it. I think that's a great idea. But is, is the thought that this employee would be part-time, albeit part of Parks and Rec or where we reside, he or she reside in terms of the town?
Effectively in Parks and Rec. I mean, it's, it's part of the park, rec infrastructure. So, but
We've also been spending some time just, you know, very much pencil to paper, just looking at some of the, the dollar value of all of this and what it could represent. We haven't increased the rental rates there since two thousand seventeen.
So that's, there's a second project here I just wanted to describe. You have two documents here. We asked, we were fortunate to have Alan Smith, who formerly was the CEO of
Four Seasons?
Four Seasons, who lives in town, and also Christine Sullivan from the SBA Institute. Helped us and Bob Mantilia.
And Bob Mantilia.
Our business development center to develop a, a business model for Waviney. And we have a draft. This really is still a work in progress that we want to further refine by the time it gets to the Board of Finance and then Town Council. And also the historical revenues from, you know, we do sixty weddings a year there. And, and quite honestly, it sort of has a reputation of being a value. Because we haven't raised the rates since two thousand seventeen. And also, also, we, you know, but we have to, in order to charge more, to be competitive with our competitors. to be competitive with our competitors, we have to provide a first-class product. That's why we hired the part-time gardener to be able to make sure that the grounds around, meeting around the mansion are always tip-top. And we also, you know, the Waveney Conservancy is responsible for the grounds, improving the grounds outside, but they have no responsibility for the house. You mentioned possibly a public-private partnership. I envisioned that someday the Conservancy would get involved with the house as well, because we, besides the ADA compliance, which is expensive in terms of the bathrooms and the elevator. We really could do further beautification of the, of the interior of the house itself. The possibility of using a tent upon demand, you know, some, some people would like a larger wedding with, you know, that could accommodate 250 or 300 people in a tent. So that option in terms of you, how we use the house, it's kind of ironic. Bobby, you're here today. You, you had, when was your wedding that I attended? How many years ago?
A few years ago. You and I were both younger then.
You have grandchildren now, so. It's a beautiful venue, but it can be made more beautiful and be competitive with best venues around. So that's the whole idea here. The Board of Finance has to understand why we are needed to spend millions of dollars to get ADA compliant and further ADA, you know, we're, we're on our way. Beautiful project last year with first boy is totally ADA compliant now. And so again, we're still working on this business model. We have talked to Parks and Rec about adopting a a somewhat of a fee increase at this time, so that people who are booking weddings out two years are paying a higher rate, and then we'll jump when we finally finalize our improvement projects in the next two, three years. We will jump to a competitive rate. That's sort of the philosophy, as long as the Board of Finance and the Town Council buys on. Any, any further questions?
So the, the tie-in with updating the second floor with ADA compliance, is that tied to this particular project? Okay, so the Board of Finance would not necessarily go forward.
Well, we've been talking about that for.
We don't want to get to a point where we're closing the second floor, which effectively means you can't do weddings, so.
So that's got, that's got to go forward.
That's how we're moving that forward. We said, okay, we've got a potential solution to address that.
I mean, in my mind, branding, that's like, we start today. Picking out one of, one of the, I mean, because that, that really is low hanging fruit. And you guys have done a terrific job, by the way, in, in putting this forward. I think I'm very supportive of a part-time director of Waveney House. I think you need a face of Waveney House. And the same person's going to go out and meet the potential bridal parties and the families and such, so I think that's a great idea, too.
Also, we just learned that the Waveney Park Conservancy has hired their part-time executive director, who is a, who is an interesting person. And I don't, I don't know if it's going to be made public yet. It's about to be made public. But that person possibly could also be this, this person that works part-time for the town on this aspect of marketing Waveney, so. And also the current staff, you know, there may be opportunities for the current staff to be part-time in the future in support of this, so. Anyway, great presentation. Again, you folks are already working with, with Field Fest, the Athletic Foundation, so we're already have a relationship with you. And I do think, hopefully, we'll have a next step and begin to, begin to market Waveney House.
That would be amazing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Food and wine coming to?
I don't think so. I think there was a scheduling problem.
Oh, there was.
Tucker, do they do Greenwich food and wine as well? Right, seven different magazines, yeah.
And that is, or is not coming to, you can't.
Sorry, this year, we just didn't have this up for your question. We did not have the consecutive dates that they needed for that event, so it was not able to happen this year, but we'd like to talk to them about.
Future years.
Next up is the New Canaan Town Players. Patricia, Joel, good morning. And we're going to try to keep this to 10 minutes.
10 minutes. So if you wanted a broad, hard copies of what?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time again, Kevin.
And this is really related to ARPA funds.
Which microphone?
I think it goes right into the speaker.
You, you actually can, it's better to speak into the microphone, but that microphone picks up everything.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time. I'll be quick. So again, I'm Patricia Spagnani, representing the Town Players in New Canaan. I'm on the board. And as you know, we have a proposal in front of the town that the town approve in our public-private partnership, where you own the building and we've been the tenants for 40 years. That the lobby expansion that we proposed, that the town approved that so that we can move forward with fundraising in earnest. It's been a little bit, we've been reluctant to go out and do major donor solicitations without that agreement from the town. The second request is, you know, is to take on the potting shed, which is currently empty, so that we could use it as really the headquarters of our youth arts program. We are short on space with all the programs that we want to have and actually that we have right now. So we believe adding this 420 square feet would give us the additional space that we need for the other programming. So those are the, the two primary requests that we have in front of the, the Board of Selectmen today. Because with that approval here in January, then we could proceed. The second part of this is, again, as part of our public-private partnership, asking the town to contribute to the overall project. So in the spirit of wanting to keep this brief, and I know you've all had the opportunity to visit the theater and talk with us in detail about what we're proposing. I'd really appreciate formally to get feedback and to, you know, talk about next steps. So again, that we could move on doing the, the fundraising in earnest. Thank you.
So we, we've had the presentation about the plan. The, the budget connection here is that, first of all, ARPA, we have to move some our further ARPA recommendations to the Board of Finance and the Town Council. We anticipated we would try to do that Monday, Tucker, so that we could have two items. We just got the community foundation's input on the nonprofits, and so we, we have a lot to evaluate. And, but also the fact that we have money in the town budget for the bathroom, the outdoor bathrooms. We have to make a choice. Are we going to do the potting shed, or are we going to, you know, follow the concept of letting the Town Players use the potting shed for a performance place as opposed to bathrooms?
I would say it's primarily rehearsal space. We'll use it as a black box theater, but it's, it, it's a good space size for doing rehearsals. But it'll be a very intimate space for performances. So again, as we look to expand our youth program, youth education program, and for adults as well. That's what we see as being the primary use. Because right now, when we have students come in, as we had this year for Mr. Hastings Improv Class, they've had to use either the outside courtyard, which was okay in good weather, or they were in the lobby itself, which is very awkward for the kids and for.
I think we all support the, the extension. And I, I didn't quite understand. I thought there was no issue whatsoever about granting authority to do that, because you already have the outside patio. You just want to enclose it. You actually say in 1985, the town approved that patio enclosure idea. So I think no one objects to that plan. The real question remains just, just what to do about the, the use of the potting shed. And I think we have to make a recommendation by Monday. To which direction we want to go. I do think personally, 50% ask is a large ask for a nonprofit in town to match this project, but I think we have to decide among ourselves what to recommend.
So just a couple of questions. Thank you both for being here. So on the reconfirming the support, I agree with the First Selectmen, seems pretty straightforward, goes back to 1985. Did you not also bring this to P and Z, excuse me, Parks and Rec? Thank you for reminding me. Yes, we went, we met with Parks and Rec formally in December and got their unanimous support. They said yes, it makes. For, for both aspects of the project. Okay, okay, great. Right. And, and I should point out that part of the, the goal is to make that whole courtyard much more accessible. Not only for people that are in wheelchairs or using walkers, but for anybody in the community who's visiting that part of the park. Because right now, it's, it's a mess. It's a stumbling bar block. You know, we all trip over everything that's there. So we want to make that much more accessible for everybody that comes to that part of the park with outdoor seating, picnic tables, you know, just a very nice place to gather. So the second question is the outdoor bathrooms. Public bathrooms. The public bathrooms, excuse me. Those are in this year's budget, are they not? Only for ARPA funds right now?
They've been taken out of the budget, put into ARPA funds. We granted 250?
Is that in the potting shed?
That was, the original thought was bathrooms at Waveney.
Come on up, Tiger. Thank you.
Got to get your mic back there.
So the original thought was that they were going to be in the potting shed, but then after we had a design done by both, by we both used Carl Rothbart and Rose Rothbart to take a look at the entire area. They proposed giving, using a black box theater for the potting shed and then putting an adjunct room off of what is now their props and costumes area for a bathroom. So it was for bathrooms. It wasn't specific. Board of Finance approved it as bathrooms, not a specific location. The Town Council was the only one that said, we'll give you the funding, but we want to approve the location at a later date. So they qualified their, their decision based upon the fact that they wanted us to go forward with the ba, with the bathrooms, but not necessarily hadn't decided on a, on a venue, so.
Is there a cost differential between putting the bath?
Excellent question. That was the next part. So the, for the potting shed, the town has approximately $110,000 of work that we have to do to make the building available for conversion to bathrooms or for a black box theater. That's the exterior of the building and actually rebuilding the floor. We'd have to do that regardless. And then in speaking with Carl and Rose on, on, when they did their preliminary work on an adjunct building to the, to the existing structure, that costs about $150,000. That's actually numbers a little bit high, according to Carl's estimates. So the 150 and the 110 got us to 260. I called 250 pretty good at that point in time to be able to do a bathroom as an adjunct and then prepare the building for a black box theater. Or if we, the initial proposal was 250 to just do bathrooms, it was, it was either. We were going to get bathrooms in either case and get a refurbished building in either case, and the thought was to allow the powerhouse to, the Town Players to use the potting shed as the black box theater and then get our bathrooms elsewhere in the same complex. That was the original thought, but we, you know.
So that's the original thought, so all that's been moved off of this year's budget that we're currently in to the potential.
We have $250,000 in ARPA funds to do bathrooms. To do bathrooms, right, and then in the location. Outdoor, outdoor bathroom. Keeping, keeping in mind, we already have in the budget the money to do the ADA bathrooms in, inside as part of the expansion of the.
Yeah, that's, that's a different, yeah.
And then the thought is that the location is, is, is up to the Town Boards, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Town Council to determine the location itself.
And when do we go through that process?
Right now, right now. By Monday, when we vote, we're going to have to make a recommendation. Do we, do we support the bathrooms in the potting shed? Or do we support the idea of giving the potting shed to the Town Players to be able to use?
Which becomes an asset for the town to use as well.
Is, is there a historic reason to, to not put bathrooms in the potting shed?
Historic reason?
Yeah, I mean, just, just in terms of, we, we've been talking about the history of Waveney, you know, in the last 30 minutes.
I would say it's a waste to use that building for, for waste. It's, it's a beautiful building. Joel and I were at this historical society this, yesterday. And, you know, found old pictures of that whole area with the greenhouses and everything else, and I was like, wow, wouldn't it be nice to just have this Performing Arts Center campus be extended to include that building? And that's, we just think it would be a really nice use for the town, and, and everybody benefits. The other thing is that architecturally, the way that the design, proposed design is laid out, which you could see from the model that you, you all saw, is that we, by putting the new bathrooms, the public bathrooms at the end of the annex that exists, kind of squares off that whole campus. So you, you've got really a nice feel to the whole thing. So we think that it would be architecturally interesting with the proposal. Plus, it would give the Town Players and the town, therefore, much-needed space to add the additional program that we want to do, which again is focused on theater arts education.
Historically, the potting shed was a support house for the greenhouses. It was a farm, and so in terms of the use, I'm not sure.
What you're asking, is there any limitation? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just, you know, in terms of, in, in terms of where there's a, a historical perspective to, to respect.
You know, would, would Mrs. Lapham be?
Where would Mrs. Lapham?
Where would Mrs. Lapham be?
Wanted the Waveney Care Center to be right next to the mansion, so she didn't win that one, so it's not necessarily always. Mrs. Lapham Lloyd.
I, I, I think, I support actually the, the concept of having it attached to the annex, making it a public facility for the sledding hill, et cetera. Just, but I always look to the expert. What, what do you prefer?
The, I would just like to see a nice use for, for both structures, you know, for both, and to get bathrooms in it. If the, if the players feel that they need the additional space, it's a nice use of the, of that, you know. The, I think it would be a nice campus feel, to be honest with you, to kind of break it all apart.
I, I agree with Kathleen, I mean, I think, and, and having been over there and walked around and seen all the thing, I think it, it makes sense. What would it look like? What would the annex, the new bathrooms adjacent to the prop?
The Rothbars were proposing it to look very similar to the existing extension.
Yeah, I think, I think it's.
Would just be, it wouldn't be an extension of the roofline, because it would be set down, but it would be.
Yeah, there it is.
But you look at it, it would, it would be a similar construction or a similar look.
It would blend. It, it looks like it would blend in.
Like it was built originally.
Where, where, where is, where are the doors on the?
Doors are actually supposed to be on the, on the western side, which would be on the courtyard side. So there's an existing walkway that comes in off the parking lot. That walkway would remain, and then you would be able to walk forward towards the, towards the powerhouse itself or turn right into the bathrooms. You could put the bathrooms facing the parking lot, but they felt to, to square that off and put the doors coming off the courtyard, so you had a nice courtyard feel to the entire.
And so there'd be kind of a line between the end of the potting shed theater and the, the new bathrooms, right?
Correct, yeah.
That makes sense.
It would probably be safer to have traffic coming into the courtyard and kids and whatnot, rather than having them be off the parking lot.
Plus, I don't think you want to be looking at two doors from the parking lot, just two doors for a bathroom. Yeah, I think that wouldn't necessarily be the nicest look to have them come off the courtyard, I think would be a better look, you know. You, you can, you can put in signage saying, you know, accessible bathrooms, things of that nature, smaller signage to get it. But to have them facing off of the parking lot, I don't, so I think it's the nicest look.
And there'd be no, would there be any connection in terms of another door into the annex at all? Strictly public, okay.
I don't think there'd be a need, because they would go through your prop room, right?
Right. I, I think we'd want to keep that separate. I meant for like, I don't know, cleaning supplies or what have you, and, and the maintenance of those bathrooms would be.
That's on the town. Yeah, similar to what we're doing with the other set that's up now near the ice rink. You know, or inside by this, by the softball fields, very similar to that. We have our, our cleaning company comes in and cleans that. We would do the exact same thing for these. So to be clear, we have $250,000 of ARPA funds already dedicated toward bathrooms. Towards bathrooms. Outdoor bathrooms. The location, and whether or not we're going to recommend additional funding toward the powerhouse project is the budget decision. Could be additional ARPA funds, or it could be budget funds, a capital, capital funds. So I propose we vote on this on Monday. And we either have to add money to the capital budget, or we have to. I mean, I do have concerns about the fundraising ability for the play.
Could I address that?
Sure.
Okay, so thank you. So when we started down this adventure, we knew, we set aside some of our rainy day funds. knew we set aside some of our rainy day funds, right? So from the town player's perspective, we're not very rich, but we're healthy enough. So plus or minus 300,000 is what we've got mostly. Deposit with the community foundation. So we thought we would take basically a third of our current funds plus a little bit, so 100, 100 and a quarter. Plus, there was what the town already put in the budget three years ago, 2019, whatever, for the ADA bathrooms in the theater, plus fundraising that we've continued to do. So we've got grant from the community foundation. We've got another application for this year's fund and we've got. So so and we did get some significant donations. We got another 30 some odd thousand in the fourth quarter in December. We got $20,000 grant from a foundation that's been generous to us, but doubled their contribution. So today, as of today, we've got $280,000 towards the overall project committed funds. We've got another $80,000 in outstanding grants that we're waiting to hear from through the end of February, maybe into April. But so we're close to about 350, which I think is, you know, third to whatever part of the way, which is pretty significant without really reaching out for major donors in town. So again, what's why we're asking the town to say, yes, okay, and you can say maybe I'm not going to make it too easy for you, but pending pending, you know, funding, right? So so where are we? We in the design process, we have contracted with the the Rothbarts for doing blueprints so that we can go out to bid. We expect to have the diagrams and blueprints completed say by April so that we can get firm bids. So right now, the estimate that we have for the total project is probably on the high side. Building materials, things have changed in, right? So we we estimated at the high side. We could come back with the proposals that are much less than what we said is the 1.5 billion in total. So what I'd ask is, you know, the town give us the, you know, green light to go raise the funds. You know, let this ride out for a period of time till we till we get the bids, because then we'll know, which isn't going to slow anybody down. Right? But if we know we can go out in our fundraising and say, town's giving us support for the project overall for the two components, for the lobby and the potting shed, given that we can raise the funds and they're willing to contribute X amount, whatever the the X amount is, then we're in a pretty strong position to go continue our fundraising. But we'll know probably by June, Tiger, June, on the cost after we get the bids, right? So I think, you know, that would give us now until basically five months to to see how far we can get against the both the costs and the fundraising.
I think at the end of the day, all the all the funds kind of go through the city anyway, whether there are funds or terms that we get through the city because the town handles this contract, handle the building of it. You know, well, we're paying for all the plans and everything, but at the end of the day, buying the materials, buying the labor or contract with the labor comes through the town. So town really has ultimate control over the spending.
And ownership. So anything we raise is money the town gets. So I kind of view it as depending upon how it's this partnership, you wind up with the asset. We're managing it. We're doing the fundraising on behalf of the town to improve the facility. So, you know, you're getting the, you know, if if you funded half half of it, you'd get a 50% discount on the total project dependent upon you, because we're going to do the fundraising for the rest.
Well, the fact of the matter is, we're not going to decide this. Finally, we're going to make a recommendation to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance can increase a recommendation or they can decrease something we've we've done. So by Monday, we're going to have to put something in the budget that the Board of Finance can relate to. They have a meeting scheduled on February 15th with the DPW capital budget. And so I think the decision will be made in mid-February by the Board of Finance, but we'll, we have to make a recommendation.
Yeah. So can I, so you're putting everything together, both approval for the the two building requests and the funding as one.
You know, the other thing we could do, we could recommend additional ARPAs or additional capital funds from the town. Capital. But again, I think whatever we decide is not going to be the final decision. Either the Board of Finance will increase what we recommend or they will decrease what we recommend. So.
So respectfully, is it possible to separate the two requests to separate the the approval to go raise funding for the two buildings?
They're connected because if we don't give, if we don't recommend funding for the potting house, for the bathrooms to be in the potting shed, then we're not getting approvals for the use of the potting shed, right? So.
I.
They're connected.
Thought Tiger said he already got the approval for that and he could do either project, he could do the project either way with the money that was approved.
Well, I know, but now someone has to authorize it. The the money from the ARPAs already can be used either place.
Right.
But the overall project has to be approved by recommendation from us and the Board of Finance buying onto it. And then whatever the town can add, increase the amount.
The reason I'm asking to potentially separate it is that if the town said, yes, you can go do both projects, go raise money, and I get a donor willing to donate a million dollars, then then I can come back and say, thank you very much.
You have that donor by February 15th, I think.
We don't even, we don't even have, we don't have the plans. I mean, we don't even have the plans.
It's a chicken and egg, but I think, you know, you got two more weeks to go.
It's a chicken and egg. This is why I'm saying, can we separate this and give us through the proposal project?
My own feeling is that if we separate it, I wouldn't want the risk of 250 coming out of ARPAs funds and it goes through a very, you know, important process. And what if it then suddenly says, well, it's not coming out of ARPAs? Then you have to come back and go through the whole budget process. So let us think about it in in a total project and then how it's funded. We'll let the Board of Finance and others figure that out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Back to the agenda. We now have one executive session for probably 20 minutes to discuss real estate negotiations. And then we will come out of executive session at 9:30. Why don't we plan on coming out of executive session by 10 o'clock? And we will resume the budget budget discussions. We may take a five minute break after we after we have said. So I would I would ask, I move that we go into executive session.
Second here.
Next seconds, all favor. Okay, so I would ask everyone to leave except for Anne Tucker. Josh is welcome to stay if you want to. It's somewhat budget related. And Tiger and Bill. Stay. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to grab a file. You know, we didn't bring something. Tell people what the schedule was going to be so we didn't have people waiting.
Yeah.
Jen, you're up now since we, okay, what are we broadcasting? Are we recording? Back live, we we existed executive session at 10:08 to review real estate negotiations. And we are back into now it, we're now into budget review, having completed our agenda items. And the first budget department we're going to review is our stupendous health department.
Thank you.
Alison, Health Director, you have the floor.
Thank you. Do you all have my presentation?
Yeah, you want to put it on the screen?
Sure.
Tucker, can you put it on the screen? Yeah, yeah, but we are, we are for the, if we can do for the public. Tiger, can you, if you send the email to, did you say? Tiger, could you? Oh, my God, there's noise next to it.
It's good noise. Natural gas is progress.
Oh, yeah, you guys must be really.
So actually, this is health and human services. Bethany will be up in a minute. Do you want to, do you want to come to the table as well? And Jen will go first and then we'll. Hey. On deck as soon as.
All right. So we'll start with the Health Department. Mission statement is the mission of the Health Department to control preventable diseases through education, inspections and monitoring by enforcing the federal, state and local codes, laws and regulations for maintaining and promoting public health. Summary of major Health Department responsibilities. The Health Department is the lead agency in emergency response COVID-19 pandemic, which includes contact tracing of positive cases, running registration and results process for COVID PCR test sites at Lappam, Paddle, Urban House, wherever we move, running the COVID-19 vaccination clinics at Van Cottage, Irwin Park, New Canaan High School, et cetera. Responsible for carrying out and enforcing all aspects of the Connecticut Public Health Code. We license and inspect all food service establishments, daycare, salons, public pools, septic and refuse trucks, private wells and septic systems. We review all building permits for properties on septic systems. The Health Department provides case management of all new Canaan children found to have an elevated blood lead level. We had five EBLL cases in 2021 and two non-EBLL property abatement cases for lead. Manage infectious disease cases such as COVID-19 tuberculosis, campylobacter, pertussis, norovirus, Lyme disease, E. coli, et cetera. We respond to and investigate various complaints from landlord tenant disputes about road vector concerns and general housing complaints. And the pandemic has kind of exasperated that with a lot of, you know, evictions going on to tend to drive the Health Department into those housing complaints for, you know, no heat, you know, water leaks, et cetera.
I just have a quick question on the inspection of food service, et cetera, daycare. Is that an annual inspection or just when they?
It depends. So food service, there are all different classifications. So a gas station is a class one. You're done once a year. Something, you know, like hashi sushi is a class four. They're done four times a year. Salons are done minimum once a year. Pools are done once a year.
Thank you.
Some major changes to the Health Department in 2021. We hired a full-time sanitarian health program planner that immediately stepped in to assist with contact tracing, worked the several test sites stood up over the course of the pandemic, reviewed and approved septic plants for both phase one and phase two with her septic certifications. Shannon also passed a food inspector written certification exam and is awaiting state DPH field standardization. There's two pieces to becoming a food inspector. So you do the course, you do the written exam, and you have to have four-year degree in public health before you do that. And then you do the field standardization. The state Health Department Food Protection Program is roughly nine months to a year behind on that field piece. And we've already been waiting six months, so we have no idea when that piece will come because the state was working from home during the pandemic while we were all working. We've hired three part-time public health nurses who are RNs via ELC grants, written and received by the Health Department. Three part-time public health nurses assist with contact trace tracing, Epi outbreak investigations and administering vaccinations. We've worked with the IT department and creating the external link for documents on demand. All our files are are scanned and available. So that's the property files for septic, the inspections for, you know, food service, daycares, et cetera. So it's helped decrease people emailing me, can I have a septic ass built? You can look it up yourself on the link. So that's been huge for us and it helps with FOI requests too. Continued in July of 2021, I should say, sorry. The Health Department went through the CLIA waiver process through the federal and state government to become a certified lab in order to provide rapid COVID-19 testing at the Health Department office, which is free of charge for our residents. Our medical director, Dr. David Reed, is the ordering provider and certified lab director. Rapid testing has become vital in early detection of COVID-19 to quickly isolate positive cases to reduce community spread. Rapid testing has also been an asset to our schools. When a sick student is sent home, they are referred to the Health Department and or pediatrician for quick results. And as we saw at the holiday times, we were really inundated with people wanting to be tested. All four of us are running outside from car to car testing people so they can gather for the holidays and such. Next is state DPH changes for fiscal year 2223. The Health Department was enrolled in the Connecticut Vaccine Program through state DPH immunization program. I completed that process in December. It was a very lengthy regulatory process. We will now be able to administer all childhood immunizations through CT whiz with DPH, not just COVID-19 vaccines. The vaccines are provided free from the State of Connecticut Health Department. It's part of the stay up to date with immunizations campaign by CDC and DPH. Through the pandemic, kids weren't getting their wellness visits. So there's now a catch-up period that's beginning. So part of that was the state reaching out to health departments to be a part of that process. Again, like I said before, receiving ELC grant for the nurses. One of those grants runs through May of 2023, which is, you know, key for me. The next big thing that the state wants is an updated community health improvement plan, otherwise known as a CHIP plan. The state provides grant money to local hospitals to partner with the surrounding health department. So we're teamed up with Norwalk Hospital, NuVance. We had our first meeting last Friday and that community health team actually is run by New Canaan resident, which is great. So we get to have a seat at the table. It's New Canaan, Norwalk Health Department, Westport, Weston, the hub, Fairfield County Community Foundation, Positive Directions, AmeriCares, all these community organizations with both public health, mental health, behavioral health, coming up with community health improvement plan.
Is that going to be an annual thing, do you think?
It's it's actually required every three years. We did it a couple of years ago. I don't know if anyone remembers. And we got, actually, New Canaan got the highest response. We did over 800 surveys. And then itemized. So for example, New Canaan's number one priorities back then were behavioral health, substance abuse, you know, drugs, alcohol. Number two was mental health. And I forgot what number three was. We're in Norwalk. Number one was food insecurity, lack of affordable housing. So it helps show the difference in each town because what Westport and New Canaan needs are are different than what Norwalks are. And Data Haven works with us and Norwalk Hospital on outlining those things and whole purposes then as part of the 10 essential services to start chipping away at, you know, those identified areas. And another initiative by our new Health Commissioner is to train local health departments to conduct infection control inspections of nursing homes throughout the state to provide better oversight of licensed facilities in Connecticut. Our new Health Commissioner is an epidemiologist. She's an MD, so she's very keen on infection control and disparities that occurred in COVID-19. So that's the purpose of that. The next slide is just our New Canaan positive COVID case cases by week. When you see this on Monday, it will be even sharper down, which is good news. So you've seen it go up and down, which is kind of what it's done, you know, everywhere else. The next slide is New Canaan Health Department inspection and permit data. So these give you all the years and then to date, the septic permits continue to climb. We're not even at spring yet, and that's usually our busy time for septic and building permits. So this just gives you an idea of the inspection numbers. I do want to point out salon's license says zero because we technically do that in May. We send it out and they get relicensed. I do want to point out salon's license says zero because we technically do that in May. We send it out and they get relicensed in June. So that's why there's no revenue yet or in that part of it. And the same thing with the garbage trucks and septic trucks. Donnie and I usually do it in either May or June when it's a little warmer. Next, we'll go to.
Can I ask you a question there? We don't really have 95 restaurants, but is that food services?
All food service.
Food service. Do we inspect the, the schools, rest cafeterias?
Mm-hmm. But they don't pay a fee, obviously, because they're us.
Anybody who bends.
Yeah, we even, we do the private schools, all of them. And if the daycare has a licensed kitchen, that's also included.
Expect Waviney? Care Center? Kisses?
I think so. I think they're considered, yeah, they're considered a class four. Chris does them. And Lapham used to be inspected too, back when they did like programming the lunches and stuff, but. Next is the PCR test numbers. This was the PCR testing we did with SEMA4 and Waviney from August 2021 to January 13th. So we did a total of 1,924 with 93 positive for 4.83% positivity rate. As you all are aware, SEMA4 left the COVID testing business. So January 15th, they cut us all off and everybody off. The next slide is PCR testing with Progressive that we, our new testing lab that we picked up. And these are just the numbers from January 19th through the 24th. With Progressive, we're doing Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And so far, the labs have been fantastic. We get the results by eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night, same days testing, which is imperative for, you know, the isolation of cases and people traveling who panic that they don't have their results back yet. So to date, we've done 203 of those, positive 24, which is around roughly a 12% positivity rate, give or take. Next slide is our rapid antigen testing. This is, you know, again, based off the CLIA waiver that I obtained back in July. We've done 1,326 to date with 11.69% positivity rate. The rapid testing, like I said, has been critical and people being able to do things that day know right away, especially with the schools and daycares.
And like, once you, if someone tests positive, you don't encourage them to get a PCR?
No, once you're positive, you're positive. But if someone comes to us narrowly mildly symptomatic and they test negative, especially now that we get results from Progressive that, that night, we encourage them to sign up for PCR testing.
Which vendor do you use on the rapid testing? Anything that's available?
Well, we use McKesson, but the actual product, what's approved by my CLIA waiver is Binax Now, the Abbott Binax Now, Care Start, and BD Veridor. So like when Abbott was unavailable, that nobody could get Abbott. I had to get, order Care Start from McKesson, but then I had to go get my CLIA waiver amended with the state health department and wait for that. So it's a process anytime you want to do anything. And then all these results have to be reported every day to the state health department and their.
Even the rapid tests.
Oh, yep, because we're a certified lab. That's why we try to encourage people to come to us because then it's, you know, a real test. The home tests don't count. So. Next, we'll move on to our vaccination update. The health department has administered 22,555 doses to date of COVID-19 vaccines. The state data breakdown is below by age group, ages five to 11, 67.39%, 12 to 17, 100%, 18 to 24, 100%, 25 to 44, 100%, 45 to 64, 96.16%, ages 65 plus, 100%. Number of fully vaccinated residents, we're at 16,627, which is 82.18%. Percent of total population with at least one dose is 96.93%, and that's the highest in Fairfield County. And that includes the zero to four who cannot be vaccinated this time. And it does, but it doesn't include the kids we did last night at Vine Cottage, you know, of the five to 11-year-olds. We did another about 44 last night, and then we have a booster clinic today at Irwin. Health department homebound vaccinations in mobile clinics. The health department has done 57 homebound vaccinations to date. The health department has done mobile clinics at the New Canaan High School, private schools, local establishments. Over the summer, we went from, you know, restaurant to restaurant to salon to the businesses and vaccinated them in their establishments because a lot of their workers don't have, you know, vehicles that come in by the train, and we coordinated with the business owners and did it in shifts. And now we're kind of working to do it again with the booster part of it. So. The health departments also provide vaccinations at Waviney and the town departments, first responders, and local construction sites. And we're also reaching, re-reaching out to the homebound to make sure they've got their boosters or if they need their boosters to offer them, us to come back again. So that's the thing. It's not one time. You're going there actually two or three times. So.
Is there any plans to do another booster, say, six, nine, 12 months from now? Just, does it?
Well, right now, there's nothing that's being said. I mean, the next thing up to date, coming up is the two to four-year-olds, which the state really hasn't decided what direction we're going with that yet. If that's, you know, going to be a local health responsibility again, they would love the pediatricians to do it. But, you know, we just don't know. And then who knows if we'll be boosting the five to 11-year-olds that we started. I mean, just never seems to end. And then we get into the health department, actual budget now. Not much has changed budget-wise. And then into, the only thing I really changed in the revenue part was I increased the revenue for plan review based off of last year's numbers and what was already going. And then in capital, I didn't put in here, but we added two vehicles. The health department only has one vehicle for three of us, and it's a 2004 Ford Crown Vic that's constantly in the shop with suspension issues and steering issues. It's every issue under the sun. So we put in for a vehicle for this year and the next budget year. So.
And that's more like going to the homebound?
No, and doing all the septic inspections and everything else we do because Chris and I, you know, I'll be at a septic inspection. He has soil testing somewhere else, and I'm having to use my personal vehicle, which I'm not keen on driving my personal vehicle on, you know, construction sites because when I got hit in a car accident, it was tough. So.
Questions for?
So for the record, you're a salaried employee, right?
Correct.
So just ballpark, how many hours have you spent at work? And physically, you were always across the street since the pandemic started, March 2021?
Thousands.
How many thousands?
Probably, there was, the last time I did a FEMA report, it was at least 2,000 extra hours on top of.
And you don't get, you don't get, you don't get overtime?
No, my staff gets overtime.
I just, I think you've done, both of you, Bethany, you too, and guys have done an amazing job. And, and ultimately, you should be rewarded for that.
Been incredible last two years. It's, thank you on behalf of the whole community, but I really appreciate this report too.
Thank you.
Jen, people have asked you, do you have enough resources?
Well, every time, staffing-wise, yes, but every time I need something, so like, let's take for instance in August. You know, when we started seeing an uptick again, I'd lost Anna and Jenny. They got town jobs. I went to Kevin and Cheryl. I'm like, listen, you know, I, I need more people. So that's when we hired Renee and Maria, the school nurses that will end up being under the grant, but for now, they're under the town. And they've been phenomenal and a huge help. November, when this really started to tick off, I again went, you know, to Kevin and Cheryl and said, hey, can we hire more people? So I have temporary people that have been phenomenal that work for me. And then, you know, part-timers like Jill, who works in the fire department, comes over and helps. And so now Kevin and Cheryl, I must say, thank you. Because every time I go to you for staff or whatever, you do get it to us. And my staff appreciates it, especially the help for Deb because the phone's ringing off the hook and everything. And, and Enzo's helped out from human services with the data entry for VAMS. Bethany's worked at my clinic. So it's, it's been phenomenal. So thank you.
Does everybody operate out of the Vine Cottage, your entire staff, or are they?
Yeah.
Everyone's in the Vine Cottage. Okay.
And do you like that space?
Yeah, we, we like that space. We like Irwin. I can make anything work. As long as I got enough room, I'll move to Irwin today if you want me to go. My clinic's there today. We used to be, today is my eight-year worker anniversary with the town in New Canaan, and I started at Irwin. So, yeah, we've moved multiple, I think, what, four times? I think, I don't know, Cheryl, at least four times. We're always homeless wanderers. But as long as I have space and, you know, again, Kevin's support with staffing and everything, we're good.
And a couple of new cars?
Yes.
We, we, we get everybody.
Give me a shiny new car, please.
We do our cars, like we do our hamburgers at a.
Well, the problem, the reason, the reason is because years ago, the insurance carrier told us people couldn't use their personal cars, which in some cases.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, because when I got in a car accident, let me tell you, bringing my stuff, Kerma would only pay for the deductible. My car insurance said it wasn't my fault because I was hit by someone else, wouldn't pay the rental fee. It cost me $1,000 to go to my own clinic because I didn't have my town car that was in the shop. And I never got that money back. So, no, not happening again.
Well.
So thank you all, though, for your, for all of you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany?
Yes. PowerPoint. Is it possible, Tiger, or?
I sent it to you.
I didn't, for approval. I can send it to you then, too. Is it in the attachment?
You want to stay for this?
I kind of got to do the out-call stuff.
Josh, what page is this on, on your? I got the human resources. Is the health difference?
Health is on six to seven.
Okay, so like the health department, I'm going to start out with the mission statement. I'm Bethany Azaro, the Director of Human Services. And our mission statement, to help all New Canaan residents function optimally by developing programs and activities that address developmental needs as well as by helping residents obtain appropriate social services and resources. Next slide. So in terms of looking at a diagram of this, a model, human services is divided into two mission statements, two aspects of the mission statement. One, individual assistance. And the second one, community outreach and education, which are further divided into the programs that individual assistants have access to through human services. And then the community outreach and education is partnering with local nonprofits as well as organizations having agency grants from human services as well as human services offering programs when resources are better done on site. Next. So a little overview of population, we have 20,000 human services clientele. We have to honor privacy and dignity. And so we know of, you know, we have about 1,000 clients that come to us needing assistance, needing resources and sort of brainstorming where they're at, hearing their situation. And then we move them on to the resources that they feel and we feel could benefit them. It does not include phone calls that we get, endless referrals of adult children whose parents are moving here, seniors who are moving out, kids, the mobile crisis unit, and many others. But these are households that we have their information and we can do follow-up with. So from that point, when we have them as a client, then the assistance can be provided at the program, agency, and state and federal level. And then you can see the children, adults, and older adults, how basically it's divided down. Households range from one-person household to six. Next slide.
Is that pretty much stayed steady over the last couple of years or is that increasing?
It's increased. Yeah, it's increased. All right. So the federal and state programs that caseworkers and myself have to have complete knowledge of or access to the information, it does change on an ongoing basis. But the agency on aging, the, for, you have to qualify for that. A large financial as well as a physical assessment are done through the state. We have Husky and Medicaid, which is the healthcare for the lower income. Unite Connecticut was just done during the COVID pandemic. Choices is our state health insurance assistance program. And Marcy, the social, adult social worker, and I are licensed, are certified in Choices. And that's ongoing training and up-to-date information that's needed in order to help any age group in the navigating the healthcare process. Medicare Savings Program is a whole other program that you have to apply for or you might qualify just by mere federal poverty level guidelines, which we, human services tries to follow. We do follow the Connecticut Federal Poverty Guideline for, in terms of assisting those that are in need in New Canaan that need direct resources, financial and food from the New Canaan itself, taxpayers' money. So energy assistance, which is the fuel, especially during the winter months, renters rebate, which is a hands-on 65-plus program that only can be done through human services. So we have a nice pulse on those people needing, getting qualifying for a rebate on their, on their rent for the year. And then we have food stamps. All right.
And Tiger, they reach out to you for these services or your, your sort of?
So this is what, yeah, this, okay, so this is what I'm going to show you. Good question, Kathleen. The program such as renters rebate has to be done through human services. The other programs, you can apply by yourself online. And there are people who come to us, we give them this information, and they rather do it themselves. We do have to honor their dignity, their privacy, but we do try to offer them other resources, encourage them, and that we are here for other reasons, and many of them, which I'm going to show you some figures in a moment. So this is the Connecticut Bureau of Social Services in terms of people served between 2012 and 2020. This is the most updated information. And New Canaan, you can tell KDAP, that is for AIDS assistance with the HIV virus. And anything less than five individuals in a town, then it will not be, it will not be put down as a number. But we do have clients, clients in human services that we do help, that. that are dealing with this chronic disease. So, the Connecticut Home Care Program for the elderly, there are five people currently. The CHIP, that's CHIP, Children's Health Insurance Program, there are currently 61 children. The Medicare Savings Program, 240. Medicaid, 1,461. Five people.
That's a big jump.
Yeah.
From, from 2012.
Uh, yeah, exactly. Now, the program has changed, too, in terms of qualifying as well. So, we have to put that into consideration. Oh, let me see. Saga, that Saga and the last one, TFA, those are cash assistance, state-administered general assistance for Saga. And it's very much like temporary financial assistance, which is down below. But it's a different requirement. So, we help people apply to these programs. What else? We have SNAP, 286. And then State Funded Medical Programs, 65. That's a whole other level that we do not get involved, involved with. That is a complete Department of Social Services administered program. But we can refer clients to that program. And then the state supplement, that once again is another program that is only dealt with with social services. And then we have more cash assistance, where 12 people are involved with the Temporary Family Assistance Safety Net, and that is temporary. All right, next slide, please. So, people serve by a medical benefit plan. You've got Husky in Connecticut. Quick overview. Husky A is for children and their parents or caregiver. Husky B is for uninsured children under 19 years old. They're in a higher-income household, but they're within the federal poverty guidelines. So, the parents might not qualify for Husky, but the child does. And so, that's Husky B. Husky C is, that's our Medicaid for the aged, blind, and disabled. And then we have Medicare D, which is basically those between 19 and 64 years old that they do not qualify for Husky A. They're not parents, caregivers, or children. And they do not receive social security or Medicare at this point. So, it's, it's the Medicaid for low-income adults that have not reached 65. So, you can see the numbers there in terms of the medical assist, benefit plans that people qualify for in, in New Canaan. So, to break this into other categories, the cash assistance, we have 23 people in 2020 that qualified for it and received it. The food is the 286 SNAP, which is the food stamp program. Medical is about 1,700, and that's combining all the medical programs that we have offered by the state and federal agencies. And this is what Human Services does. It gets people to qualify for these in order to help with their sources, based on their sources of income and their status. All right, program participation. If we break this down, comparing it to Human Service clients, and then again, you know, this is, as clients, we have to remain, their privacy is important to us. And so, we do have information. We try to gather it. At the same time, this is a low number of whom we expect based on their assessments that they do with us. But out of the 1,600 people in the Husky Medicaid program, 415 are clients that, that we service. The Medicare Savings Program, we have about half that we work with. The SNAP with the food pantry, these are 170 people that are on, that also are on SNAP that have access to the food pantry, and they do use it. And then the renter's rebate, which I said is a great point for us to be able to do outreach when they come to us for the rebate. Then we're able to assess them for other things, once again, if they're willing to accept our, our help. And then the energy assistance, you can apply by yourself. You can go down to the energy program in Stanford or Norwalk that we are affiliated with, and you can apply. So, we know that 32 households have come to us and rather have us do it. There are those that want to keep their privacy. They receive their information. They, they, they don't want to do it through us. They want to go down and remain private. So, we do not have access. And then the Connecticut Home Care Program for the elderly, we do have three of the five clients. All right, thanks, Tiger. The next, the Human Services Program. We do have, these are the programs that we have found a need for. If there are other needs that come up through the process of interacting with assistants and also hearing about public health issues, that the public, we always have to keep a pulse on what, what the community is looking at. That's why Marcy, who's the adult senior caseworker, and Jackie, who's our youth family, they are in touch with so many resources, from schools to other agencies, about what's happening and what the vibe is of the community. And then Human Services, in return, tries to see where, where we can help or add to our programming. This year, we added post-invention and crisis team as well. This is for, in the event of a suicide, there's sometimes a, a trigger for others to commit, or reach out through suicide for such, with such an act triggering their possible intentions. And so, we have formed a crisis team for that. In the event there is a suicide, we can put this into work very quickly and see what the best, what the situation is. Sometimes it might be a crime scene, so the police, you know, can only be limited. But we are there and we have our resources. The Community Outreach Team, which was formed as a result of COVID, this allows us to disseminate reliable information in a timely matter, manner to our large communities within our community, such as faith-based communities and organizations, clubs, schools, things like that, private schools as well.
So, so Bethany, the team is actually your, you and your staff, and then volunteers?
That we've chosen, like, police, a liaison from police, Silver Hill, Voices, Kids in Crisis, depending and see where we need to utilize.
Got it, yeah.
What is needed. And so, we have reoccurring the food pantry, which is every two weeks, the holiday programs, back-to-school programs. We now, you know, do the flu, COVID, blood pressure clinics. The COVID, we assist Human Health Department when they require our needs, our assistance. Telehealth program, which, you know, started out with like 300, 300 people participating, and we're down to less as Fitbit and Apple and hospitals as they gain the telehealth knowledge and the apps that are done. People still remain vital and motivated to, to work and do exercise. At the same time, they've switched over to more user-friendly. And I still do have my clientele, and they know we're here, and then they can come in. And that's really generated a lot of, a lot of citizens coming in and, and understanding Human Services and how we can help. Lapham Center, Schoolhouse Apartments, we have started groups, ongoing monthly groups, support groups, information groups, and that is going very well. The unbelievable rapport that we've gained through the past couple of years with police, fire. We're doing OSHA training now for public works, for fire, we've been doing for years. The Employee Wellness Fairs, their flu clinics, we've really put in, and we have not counted those people that we, that we service on behalf of Human Resources. So, the other agencies that reach out to us, next slide, oh, hey. That reach out to us to, that we have found, we work very well with in terms of the resources that they can offer us. Instead of reinventing the wheel or duplicating, we have, we give money each year to the following organizations. And this year, the proposed budget is 174,000, which is the same as last year. When you look at all the agencies, it does cover the age spectrum of our community. We have youth, family, adults, and seniors that these somehow, one way or another, can, that we, as resources, Human Services can gain entry into because of our rapport and our relationship, and we can collaborate and help our, our resident in need and, and their families. Next slide, the community outreach and education. This is very, this is ongoing, and we, we gain more and more resources each year as the caseworkers continue to integrate into not just our community, but our surrounding community. And the fact that we have point persons, liaisons, in all these areas only benefits, only benefits the citizen when they come in and they need help. 2-1-1, we get calls weekly from 2-1-1. So, that's been, the United Way has been very instrumental in bringing people to us. And then from that point, we can hear what their situation is, and we brainstorm. We learn new things. We never know who's going to walk in that door or call us on the phone. But if we don't have a resource, we do find it. Right now, behavioral health, you know, for the past year or two, has been a huge impact on the town. And I, counselors, therapists, I know, are totally booked. But we are, through Marcy and Jackie, we are finding more and more counselors, therapists that are opening their hours up more. They're accepting Medicaid or pro bono. And that is what's so key about Human Services, where, you know, even calling therapists that we know of, that work for others, to see if they work on the side or would do this and that. And they are completely hands-on. So, this is just invaluable, our resourcing, networking, collaborating, partnering. It's just ongoing. So, the next, just wanted to bring this into closing with showing you this fluid model about what is being done every day at Human Services. The partnering, the intervention, the outreach, and the assistance, it all works, and it all increases the value of each of these areas. And from Human Services to the individual, to community, the whole thing is just evolving. It's revolving, and access gained to resources is just vital in terms of meeting this mission statement. Next, we go on to the budget for the fiscal year '23. The, the largest change, really, I think we're up 1% in costs. And that would be, you see, we're staffed perfectly. Our supply and demand of our needs and resources, we work with them. And the caseworkers are so great. If they need more work or more resources, nobody has a problem with working beyond their eight-to-four job, picking up new resources and people to help, to help their clients. The only thing coming down the pike is kids in crisis. We now have, we completely fund the high school kids in crisis counselor. And he, he works independently of the Board of Ed, which is a huge plus because anything, anytime a child or family comes to the kids in crisis, it is not in a child's record. And that's a very, that's a safe point for many of the families and kids. And so, we definitely, this has been valuable to the point where we now are trying to get a middle school kids in crisis counselor. The Board of Ed has agreed with their ARPA funds to provide the salary for three years. So, if this proves to be a successful initiative, Human Services would like to pick up and plans on picking up that second income that, for the middle school kids in crisis counselor. So, I see this 85,000 for the high school counselor doubling. And then next, like, two budget years out for us to get ready for the third, so that we can continue a middle school counselor. Once again, we're trying to, you know, key into the behavioral health aspect that New Canaan needs and is receiving. The crucial point is, people come for help. We have the resources for the help. The gap is having that person make that jump into asking for help. And so, that's where Human Services puts itself in encouragement and quick resources into the line of receiving help. So, I, the, the supply is there, the demand is there. It's that gap of mental health. It's a hard stigma to cross over individually for each, each person. And that's what we need to work with, is erasing that stigma because we do have resources there intact. Hub, the regional behavioral health, is an incredible resource for every single type of counseling needed and divided for this area. People are responsive in the area of behavioral health. We just have to get that person who needs it to feel comfortable and not just come and go in one time, but on an ongoing basis to change their life. So, that is it in a nutshell. Any questions? Let me know. And just, it's a wonderful, wonderful department that is very much into helping the community. And our hearts are in the right place.
Ash, did you review the outside agencies?
The what?
The outside agencies that we fund with the?
Yeah.
We review them, yes. And they give us quarterly statements about how many kids they've seen, the number of people they serve. We get those every year. And then when they apply for a grant each budget season, they have to give us their financials.
Okay, questions?
Just, just so I can understand a little bit. So, kids in crisis, we're taking that down by 5,000. But the expectation is, in the years to come, we're going to be increasing it.
Double that.
Right.
Now, they requested 90,000 the year before, and they requested 85 this year.
Oh, they requested?
This was at their request.
Oh, their request, okay.
Yeah, this is not because we've gone down.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
This is upon there.
I'd like to clarify something, though. When the Commission, Health and Human Services Commission, discussed this back in December, they run into the misimpression that we, we've capped the outside agencies. So, if we're going to make any changes, we have to reallocate the money. That really isn't true. I mean, if, you know, if there's a need there for an outside agency, we should request, regard it as a new request.
Yes.
And not consider it, we got to take money away from somebody else. So, that's.
Absolutely. We've increased it in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is, I hate to be crude, but it's the biggest bang for our buck because it is, we don't have to do, we don't have to, we don't want to duplicate, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And there are so many professionals and experienced people in these organizations that this is what they do. So, we do want to rely on their expertise.
Well, that, and, and I assume most, if not all of these, actually are hopefully getting something in our funds this year.
Yeah.
Assumably, I would think.
I know that Get About has applied for a new van because being able to take two or three people to one place, they have to, because of COVID,
Right.
have to do separate rides. I know they've requested a new van, and I know, yeah, the other, absolutely, they've, they've done all their requests.
And what was the addition in the community program, mental wellness?
Well, since we had the 5,000
Yeah.
from kids in crisis, this is for other organizations, like the Ram Council.
Okay.
Live Girl. People, they come to us for, or the prom, to come to us to help them with a guest speaker, T-shirts for an event they're having, things like that. Jackie also receives a grant each year, a youth grant from the state, about $25,000. And all these organizations, they know to come to her for this extra money they need to run these educational series, these leadership series. It's phenomenal, the speakers that they come up with. And on our website, the Health, the Human Services website, we have every single nonprofit that we work with, and you can click on them and get their calendar, see all the, the events. The library has come into huge events focusing on these public health issues as well. It's all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing. Just want to, again, thank you for all your efforts and your team's efforts in COVID. I know you've been an indispensable assist to Jen and her team, and so, thank you for all of you.
Absolutely, that's why we're here.
Appreciate it.
How many jobs have you done?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. I've probably done, I've only done 1,000. Probably Harrison Pierce has done eight.
So, we still haven't been able to find a Saks Middle School kids in crisis counselor, so?
Yeah, the, we keep in touch with kids in crisis. They give us updates about interviews they've had. Some people they've loved or have gone elsewhere. It's just, it's a trying to find that right person, and they just don't want to hire anybody.
So, do you think, though, that that increase might come through for next budget year? Should we be putting aside some? Should we be putting aside some funds?
Well, ARPA from the Board of Ed.
Brian has, Brian had, Brian had a million one.
Pushing us for three years.
Of his own.
Check, okay, you just said that, thank you.
But I'm, but I do see in the future, in the horizon that we will be taking this on.
And then I think we have two or three vacancies on the commission. We need to.
Yes.
Identify some candidates for, so.
Yes, that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Appreciate it.
11 o'clock, we didn't take a break. Next up, we have Tucker, who? So anyone want to take a five minute break? You need a five minute break? No? We have recreation and then we're going to do 79 is coming back. So is it just recreation and then we're done? And registered voters? Following up on, so we'll do recreation now, no break?
Morning.
Morning.
So I think Steve's on Zoom, actually.
Great, good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready. Okay, it's been quite the challenge. I appreciate the, the extra time to get up to speed with Steve's budget. The whole recreation department has helped, including Steve's talking to him on the phone and everything. I think we're pretty, we're in a pretty good place. Steve has, has developed a very comprehensive budget for, for you. Which is in front of you. Do you want him to speak?
Steve, do you want to say something initially or do you want to fill in?
No, 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 I just want to say, I just want to say, you know, it's been a challenge the last couple of weeks. And I want to thank everybody in town hall and all the community people for their outstanding support and, uh, uh, well, which is because of my illness, but I'll be back there. I'll let John and Bill handle the, handle the presentation, they can do it. If any questions, I'll try and I'll jump in.
Great, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So main factors is recreation is coming back. People are really wanting to be in programs outside especially. And with that, the biggest increase would be, would be in the other classics, classes and programs that helps both the revenue and, and the expense side. And that expense side is needed to run the programs, which actually bring in more money than they, they cost, very simply. So with that, we did, talking to Bill, we did make a little bit of an increase to Steve's budget, added a little bit more to that and also the one other line item. I'll be glad to go through all the, all the different things or you want to ask questions?
The page system. Should be 15 on the smaller packet.
Yeah. Primary change overall is about $220,000, but 160 is in that one line item that John just mentioned is in the other classes and programs, recreation administration. We take that. Tiger, this noise is beginning to interfere. Could you just speak into the mic? Sure. The, uh, so as I mentioned, that the overall change for the, the entire department, always, all Steve's budgets is $219,000, but 160,000 of it, 159,750 is actually in this other classes and programs that John just mentioned. So the majority or the bulk of it is in that one line item. And given the fact that there's actually a positive return to that on the revenue side for the increase in programming, it actually will pay, that increase will pay for itself and increase revenue. The majority of the rest of the changes, if you look across each, each of, each of the divisions or each of the departments themselves are very minimal at best. As you, as you come down and it really comes down to a couple of changes in the salaries and benefits and then some majority in the, in the utility fees. That's a, the, the overall change is really in that one.
That one line, can you give me some examples of the program?
I can speak to that. I, just to back up and, and give you a little more, obviously, most of our budget has small increases related to, and you've heard this before, the rise in the minimum wage for our part-time employees and the, the disruption in the supply chain and us getting chemicals for the pool and the manufacturing costs. Those are all built into the electrical and water and, and transportation issues that show a bump for this. But as, as Tiger and John had just mentioned, the one, one of the areas within our programs is a line item called other programs. And those typically are those people that we hire as contractors. So what we're seeing now, but let me back up and first say that it's been so nice to see the parks just jammed. I mean, I hadn't seen that before and people are reemerging back out of this COVID into our parks and into our programs. And it, it's just so nice to have to wait and to drive down the road while people walk across the pass, for God's sake. It, it's our snack bars, it's our playgrounds, it's our pools. And, you know, we're all emerging out of this pandemic and we worked really hard with the CDC and the state to, to be able to offer our programs even during the pandemic, but now we're coming out of it. But what people went to is they went to, they went to tennis, they went to soccer, they went to the day camps, they went to the swim lessons and they, we offered, we got our program back in the schools, the after school programs, which is great after a year off. That's an extension of their school day. You see tennis this past summer was up 290%. Youth tennis, that was adults, youth tennis was up 115 and substantial number increases in soccer and day camp and swim lessons. People want to get out and they've come to us, they've found recreation all over again. What's happened here is that with COVID, I used to be able to find a college student to pull out for the summer and hire to run a program or two, or a teacher from the public schools, but because of COVID, they've been reluctant to join that, to do that, to get back into it, thinking that they're going to sick, work, get sick working with kids. So I've been forced to hire more contractors, businesses and people to come down and provide a service for us. And with that, their expenses are going up. And I think it's a lot cheaper for me to hire a college kid than to hire one of these vendors, but that is the reason why we're asking for that increase. We found that last year, we left a lot of people behind. We left a lot of wait lists where we couldn't, we didn't have enough resources or money in our account to, to offer a second section to bring in all these waitlisted people. Now we want to be able to do it. And that's what the request actually is there for.
So you're, you're responding to, to wait lists.
Demands, heavy demands. I hate to have to have people say, I can't have you because we can't open another section. We built these wonderful pickleball courts. Now I want to run pickleball clinics. It was a surprise, we stole it out of the budget last fall, but you know, now I want to, I want to be able to budget for it and have pickleball clinics and, and swim lessons and have more programs for the kids, but more importantly, add programs in the summer, especially in late July and August, when everything seems to close down and there are a lot of kids in town that don't have anything to do. And I want to bring in those contractors and that's what the request is for. That's the major request.
As Tiger said, it's going to, they're going to pay for themselves anyway.
And, and so what we, what we spend in money, I'm sure we'll bring back in revenues.
The other part is if for some reason this all dries up and, you know, people goes back to normal, we're down another 20%, we won't be spending the money. So it's, but we need the money in order to have all these programs. We see it happening.
Is this the budget the Parks and Rec Commission reviewed or is it, was this an ad? When do we have this?
This is the budget that they haven't really reviewed it except on, you know, the chairman, that type of stuff. So they haven't seen it until it's come through you.
This is actually, thank you for this, it's great. Any new, I guess one question for you and then one question for Josh. In terms of the programs, obviously we're trying to address those where the greatest demand is and you're, and you are helping out with relieving some of these wait lists. Any new programs other than potentially pickleball? Is, are we introducing any new programs?
I tell you, I run on, if anyone wants a program, I'll run it. So whatever interest develops over the course of a year, I'll develop a program for it. Now, in, in this particular case, I'd love to sprinkle some more money back into tennis and expand that as well as pickleball and after school programs. But mainly, we always fell short of having funds for the July and August programs for kids. And you know what? Last year I brought in this company called Grit Ninja. Those, those American warriors you saw on TV, you know, when they're doing all that? We brought that in from Westchester County, the kids had a blast. I only ran one week of it. This summer, I think I could have run four or five weeks of it, but it was the demand and it's what everybody wants. Looks if everybody decides they want to go skateboarding again, we'll do something with skateboarding. But here it's unpredictable.
Right.
And we listen to the ground swell of what the people, people want in this town and we move in that direction.
That's great. So Josh, where would I see on the revenue line, any uptick in?
Sure, there's, so those changes are reflected in here. And on the revenue side of the small packet, that should be in, on page 21. It's also titled other classes and programs offset.
Okay. So when I see negative 65, that what?
So it was, it was a 65,000 increase, sorry, that's confusing. From what was originally submitted.
Okay, so the increase in what we're hearing proposed on the expense line is going to be adding about $65,000 in additional revenue.
Revenue, correct.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
Shouldn't we have Aggie for the Lapham programs as well?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Good morning. Oh, your programs at Lapham?
Um, well, right now, we're doing a lot on Zoom. Again, we are offering hybrid for all the classes in person and on Zoom, whatever they feel comfortable doing. It, it is truly amazing that like art history, I usually get about 20 people to watch art history program every, every week and on Zoom, I'm getting 50 or 60.
Wow.
So they're home, they don't want to come in. And, but some of them do. So that's, that's what we're doing and we're, each week we're adding more and more classes back in person. The teachers were kind of hesitant to come back into, so, but they're coming back now. And since, since Christmas, until Christmas, we were running normal, open, everything. And now we, we've gone back to switching to the hybrid for, for the winter. They kind of prefer staying home in their pajamas in January, February, so. But the exercise classes have stayed pretty consistent. They come in, they want to come in to do those, they're doing them with their masks on, their choice. You know, we, we, we ask them if, you know, we're not recommending, we're not requiring it, they're just doing it. They just feel more comfortable. So we have new programming coming on, we're looking at doing a cornhole competition in the back area of Lapham. That's one of the things that's coming up through senior centers, because they want to do stuff outside that they could do outside that's not too hard to do. We've got a whole bunch of new programs coming for spring. And we got stuff, we're, we're planning on if it doesn't get better, but it seems like it's getting a lot better, to do more stuff outside in the back patio and on the, on the back lawn, which we did last spring too. Yeah.
Great.
Whatever happened with Baji?
The group kind of just slowly disappeared and then nobody was playing, so.
We still have the courts though, right? Is it me?
No, we never.
No?
There were several requests and I never, 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 never took off. Yeah, it's very popular at quite a few places, but it just never quite got going.
We have, we have a set, they, every once in a while, somebody will play in the back. It's not really a court, they just kind of figure it out and they play back there, but not very often.
So before Omicron arrived, how were the seniors, they were using, they were coming to Lapham?
Yeah, it was almost back to normal.
And how are you seeing them in terms of their effect on their mental health and?
COVID was horrible. COVID was absolutely horrible on, on the seniors, especially the isolation part. And some of them have not come back. They're not going out. Some of them haven't left their house in two years. There are very few. A lot of them felt okay, they took out okay outside, we did a whole bunch of stuff outside. They were doing okay with that, even when it was pretty okay, even after they got their booster shot. And then we've got some that are playing bridge no matter what, you know, so.
Bridge is addictive, right?
Yeah, so we, we have the gambit, but COVID has been very hard. It's been very hard on them.
And Marcy is coming over there a couple of days a week or?
Yeah, Marcy comes with, she does a program with the police officers. She came every Wednesday while that program was going on, it's going to start up again February 1st. And then she came and they have a, a support group. So like probably once a week, every Wednesday and then twice a month, she has a big group, like maybe 20 people or so. That, that she comes in with. And then if she comes over for something, like if we have an event, she comes to, like if we're having, we're having Valentine's bingo and she'll come over and, and, and work with me on that. And then she, they get to know her, they get to see her if they request anything. They know Bethany because she comes for blood pressure, so they know Bethany where she is, what she's doing, if they need more assistance, they know where to go. We have a lot of people who have become widows during COVID and this has been very, very hard on them. So they have, especially if, if the husbands were the ones who were the connected with the internet and they did not do any of it, those guys are, we're working with them really hard. Marcy has a lot of connections with them and then they come over and they get Zoom support from me and then we get them, you know, back up and running on, so they're connected. If you're not connected at all, it's really bad. Yeah.
Further questions? Great, thank you. Steve, do you want to say anything before? Steve still on? No? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So we now have registered?
Oh, yeah, it's fine.
We now have registrars? Are they going to come up? Okay, we're just to update people, we didn't talk about registrars the other day when we did general government, but because of the what the redistricting did to us to give us, I don't know, six or seven districts? Oh, good point. We're waiting for Nick. So he knows this too.
What page, what page are we on?
Do you want to take a five minute break?
Yes.
Are, are we done after this?
Sure, yeah, why don't we take a break?
Let's take, let's take a five minute break or a three minute break. Discussion.
So 79 might not actually be a part of the package.
Week or two.
Well, the registrar is actually part of the personnel discussion as well, as well again.
Yeah, no.
Well, there, it's flat, right? Josh, 79's budget?
Well, 79 was initially removed, but according to theirs, if they're bringing it back, I'll put it in as whatever it is. My computer's not working.
They're matching their request of last year. So we're looking at 79 right now. And just as a preface to this, everybody knows during COVID, right? That 79 was key.
Are you recording?
We are recording.
Okay, we're back in, we're back in session, resuming.
We are zooming.
We're not zooming, we're resuming.
We're zooming.
We are resuming, not resuming. Are we zooming too?
We're zooming and resumed. We're doing both. Bob Dorn was here earlier, he got a little bit off schedule and he had to leave to catch a plane. But he submitted something, an email last night, just letting us know that they will not be increasing their budget for this year. They wanted to stay level at the previous request of $38,197.63. They have however, and the billows when we're here, they have gone out, there's been several folks that have reached out to 79 saying, what is it that you would need? Nick, you and I had this conversation before, what is it that 79 would need going forward to make all of this camera equipment work, zoom wise and what have you?
Yeah, like, just to give an example, like now, I think if you, if we put up on the screen of, you know, document like we've been doing, you can't, you can't see the speaker, like, so there should be a camera. you can't, you can't see the speaker, like, so there should be a camera
And, and previously, before Zoom, that's what these cameras did, like the people at the podium, they, they, but it required somebody.
But you had an operator moving the cameras.
Yeah. And.
Moving the camera.
But they also have these, these voice activated cameras now that, which um, was used at Westcog that, you know, I think we had to do that, so whenever any speaker, the camera automatically moves to that speaker.
So they have this proposal, but there's more work to be done on that. They've been working with Bill Ossman to find out, and IT to find out what exactly would be needed. And also to possibly hit the boardroom to be part of that as well, uh, same configuration.
Would that be capital though?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this number, I'm sorry, we don't have it in here, but the thirty-eight thousand, one ninety-seven, is that?
It's operating. Yeah, that's.
That's operating. One, is it a part-time? Or what is that?
Collection of, of part-time.
Yeah, there's three or four people that run the, the meetings.
So that's, it's primarily salaries and, yeah, okay.
Now, do you remember, we did grant them the ARPA money?
That's for capital though.
For capital.
That's, that's, that's to modernize some of the equipment in there, that, that modernized, in addition to what we did last year.
Exactly.
And are these, so these are contractors, they're not employees of ours. They're employees of seventy-nine or contractors of seventy-nine. We just pay them a stipend per year.
Okay. Did also want me to point out that just this morning, they launched, uh, seventy-nine's got their new website launched. I'll get you the address and send that to you. He said they're still working through a few kinks here and there, but I'm proud of that. That's all, he, as he was walking out, he quickly asked me to share that information with you.
So we have Monday morning session for, starting at eight-thirty, with a hard stop at ten o'clock to vote on the budget, but also to have a budget overview. We, we won't do the budget overview today, but and uh, so we should go to executive session, brief, brief executive session to discuss our couple, couple of personnel matters.
We could do the register for voters?
That's in the, in, in executive session, yeah, yeah. So um, I would move it at eleven-twenty-seven to go into executive session, we'll come out and there's no vote when we come out. So the recording will stop and then when we come out, all we, we would do is vote to adjourn. Probably.
Oh, second.
Second, on favor? Okay. Um, I guess just Cheryl and um, Tucker and Anne and Josh can stay. Tommy, you can't stay. Anybody else on the, on the uh? All right, we came out of executive session at eleven-fifty-five and we will, I understand a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Kathleen gets it.
Uh, Nick moved, Kathleen seconded and all in favor, aye. Eleven-fifty-five, we're adjourning.